This eighth day of December in council chambers. Let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in the foyer and state your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Baum, then followed by the pledges.
Well, we're gonna start off a little different tonight. I made that decision, and we're all gonna sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. No, just kidding. I just pray. How gracious in heavenly God we come to this season of the year where we celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. God, we ask that your Spirit just ascend upon us, that it might fill our minds, might fill our hearts, that we focus on the agendas that are pure and holy, that we focus on the agendas and items that encourage our city, encourage our citizens, and encourage each other. God, we ask that your Spirit just be with us, that it fill us with joy and hope of future times and decisions that lie ahead. Deliver us from any personal agendas that do not support the city as a whole. God, we just thank you. We thank you just for the ability to be here. We thank you for our law enforcement and our first responders. We thank you, God, that they're here and give unselfishly to each and every one of us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the freedom of our liberties and freedoms, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone. Honored and excited, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three, remarks of visitors. Taylor Perry.
Hello. Good evening. Can y'all hear me? Okay. Taylor Perry, 516 Grimes Street. I wanted to encourage transparency from council and city management regarding the progress of the upcoming audit, especially since we renewed the contract with the same firm that failed to meet last year's deadline. With the previous finance director having already left her position, it's important that accountability is directed appropriately. The goal is not to avoid holding staff accountable altogether, but to ensure that if delays were tied to prior leadership's decisions or processes, the new finance staff is not unfairly blamed. At the same time, accountability should still exist for internal decision-making where appropriate and for the audit firm, especially given their past performance and all. I'm asking that we receive regular updates on the audit milestones so residents can understand the timeline and what has changed from the previous year, and how we plan to prevent another late submission. Transparent updates and clear expectations will help rebuild public trust while ensuring that responsibility is signed fairly and that our team is set up for success going forward. Thank you.
Is that all of them?
Yes, sir.
All right, item number four, staff report. Begin with some years of service. Mayor Perry, next two are with us tonight and want to recognize Robert Valdez for 20 Okay, item B, I believe.
Mayor, we do have multiple new employees to introduce. So Tiffany's gonna start with one within the community services division.
Good evening. So I want to introduce you to our full-time library clerk. This is Annabelle Pollan. So Annabelle, actually, when she came for our interview, I kept looking at her and thinking, she looks so familiar to me. And she actually started as a volunteer in high school five years ago when I took over at the library. So we're really excited now to see her come back to us now as a staff member. And she reminded me that I had been remiss in introducing her to you because she just jumped in in October full-time and hit the ground running, and so it feels like she's been with us forever. But Annabelle has a degree in criminal justice from Sam Houston, and we are extremely excited to have her with us.
I'm gonna do fire and police next because some of them are on duty and just in case they get a call for service. So I'll call Mitch Crowell for our assistant fire chief up. He's got a couple within the fire department.
Just one? Yes, Mr. Prescott couldn't make it. He's off shift, so.
Got it.
So everybody, this is Mr. Logan Green. He comes to us fresh out of Fire Academy. He's from Crockett. He's joined us. He's had a pretty exciting first couple of shifts. He's made two extractions and one structured fire. So he's brand-new. All this is first-time experiences, so we're breaking them in right here in the city of Navasota. Unfortunately, we don't want that, but.
And he's still here.
And he's still here. He hasn't left us yet, so we'd like to welcome him aboard and hope he stays with us quite a while.
Mayor, next I'll have Jennifer Reyna, our Public Works Director, introduce our new utility billing coordinator.
Hi, good evening, Jennifer Reyna, Public Works Director. I'd like to introduce to our Public Works family Michael LaBelle. He's our new utility billing coordinator.
Mike Myers, Police Chief, have two new hires and a recent graduate to introduce.
He has a background in accounting, super eager to work with the city of Navasota, wants
First one, Justin McCombe. We hired him last week.
to advance hopefully within the city with his career.
He comes from Caldwell, Texas. He's got some jail experience, and he's hired as a police cadet.
So I would like to welcome Michael LaBelle with the utility billing coordinator.
He's gonna attend the police academy in January. The second hire is Vernon Polk.
And lives here in town.
He and his family relocated in the area about a month ago.
And lives here in town. So he is. Always has a smile.
Hired him on. He comes with five years' experience from East Texas, and he's already in the FTO program, accelerated phase, so he should be off FTO pretty soon in the streets.
And last, but certainly not least, for this evening, our maintenance services director,
Third one, y'all have met him before, Caleb Wazowski. He did recently, on Friday, graduate the police academy, so we just wanted to congratulate him on that. And he starts, he doesn't have his uniform yet. He gets those tomorrow, and then he will get sworn in this week. His badge pending, and he will start the FTO program as well.
Jay has one new employee on his team.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Ashley Perkins. She is a proud Navasota graduate. What year did you graduate?
Oh, eight.
Yep, so she is, she lives here in town as well. She's very proud of the city, and she was very eager to join our team as a maintenance labor. The first week she was here, she was up on the boom decorating that tree, and she learned how to use that thing very well.
Very good, welcome. Mayor, great times. Really exciting to see y'all such great additions to our team.
I have a proclamation this evening for the Tree of Angels. Join me up here, please. Whereas when crimes occur, society must protect not only the rights of the accused, but also the rights of the victim. And whereas recognizing that the holiday season is a difficult time for victims and their families, the Tree of Angels has become a memorable tradition observed in Grimes County in Navasota to recognize that the holiday season is a difficult time for victims and their families. The event honors surviving victims of violent crime and victims' families by allowing loved ones to bring an angel to place on a special Christmas tree. And whereas all of Grimes County recognizes the important work of all who commit themselves to assist crime victims and their loved ones, traditions like the Tree of Angels reflect the kind and compassionate spirit of the holiday season and encourage us all to play a role in building a safer, more just community. Therefore, I, Bert Miller, the mayor of the city of Navasota, do hereby proclaim the month of December as Tree of Angels Month, and urge citizens of Grimes County to participate by placing an angel ornament on the tree located in the lobby of the Navasota Municipal Building or at the tree located in the lobby of the Grimes County Justice Center to remember and pay tribute to those whose lives have been touched by violence. You don't like to tell us who you are and why you're up here with us.
I'm Brenda Williams. I'm the Grimes County Crime Victim Coordinator for the DA's office and all law enforcement. Jerome Bass is Navasota Police Department, the Crime Victim Liaison for Navasota.
Philip Furtia Diaz, the Crime Victim Liaison Office of the DA's office.
Very good. Do you have angels here, or you could bring an angel with you, but the tree is out.
Yeah, it's there.
All right, just ready to go.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Item D is the update from City Council on sessions attended at the annual Texas Municipal League Conference held in October in Fort Worth, Texas. Whoever wants to go to start item, or I can start.
Well, I left some of my notes, but one of the things that hit close to home and something, Ms. Perry, that you spoke of in the legislative update session, and one of the things is the state is gonna come down very heavy on delayed audits. And they're not talking about one day, two days. They're talking about from the moment it is due, and they are gonna be keeping a watchful eye on that. So as you said, Ms. Perry, it would be good for us as a council also to go ahead and get regular updates from our prior experience, and I think we were probably fortunate in the delays that we had in getting our audit completed of not having any ramifications from it. The other session, it was a general session, but the opening general session, John O'Leary, who is a, he's a motivational speaker, but he has the story to tell that is just unbelievable at the very young age of approximately five years old. He was kind of a outcast, you might say, and he had a group of friends, and he saw them out in the woods playing little gas and striking a match and watching it do. And so he went home, went in his parents' garage, saw the gas can, poured the gas on the floor, lit a match. He was burned 100% of his body, and he burned his family home down. He was in the hospital for like six months. His recovery was two, three years, and his life is just unbelievable. And it encouraged me to see what he went through, and his message was that no matter what you're hit with, with your faith and determination, you can succeed. And that's what he was telling us as a city, no matter what we're hit with, with faith, with determination, and working together, it's unbelievable what we can overcome. And it's very strange to see him. You would never know that he was burned so bad, with the exception of his hands. He lost all of his fingers. But it doesn't stop him. Now, you will notice, he does kind of will hold his hands back behind him, but he will bring them out. But his story is so powerful that they did make a movie. It's called Soul on Fire. And that was one of the things Mary Jane and I made sure that we did, and it was playing in college stations. A very powerful movie, I suggest. If you get the chance, that you do go see Soul on Fire. The other session that we went to that was very interesting, it was by a lady that talked a whole lot about how to greet people, how to notice people, and different things you should do, all the way to shaking the hand. She said, whether it's a man or a woman or what, you stick your hand straight out in a firm shake. It's not a gentle or do that. Always put your name tag on your right shoulder. People have a hard time with names. You go to shake somebody's hand, you automatically look at your right shoulder. And she said it's amazing how that will help you remember that person. And she said it is hard often to remember somebody's name, and she said never be afraid to ask them if you don't remember their name. Always introduce yourself and your name is. She just talked a lot about doing with your hands, that you should keep your hands out in front. Don't put them behind you, as John O'Leary did. I kind of wanted to say something. And she said another thing, don't put them like you're hiding something, you know, like don't keep them down here. Keep them out. Do this, do that. But always stick that firm handshake out and just be strong. But I thought that was very interesting, just a short deal about how to greet people.
I did attend several classes that I did make notes of things that really, I thought that was really powerful. First, I'd just like to just take this time out to thank the staff that went, that some of them that I had never laughed and talked with, that was real thankful that that time we got to know each other. Jay? So I just made a few comments here. One of the classes that I attend, they talked about term limits for the council. And this particular lady that was speaking said that each council already have term limits, whether you have them on the book or not, that whenever you have election, that's a term limit for you, whether the people want to keep you or whether they want to get rid of you. Someone else also said that we need to share our mission statement with everyone, that if we think that we're real powerful in our mission statement, we need to continue to share that mission statement. Also, someone also said that when we're not moving, our citizens suffer. When we're not moving, our citizens suffer. Be willing to sit down and talk with citizens, whether you like them or not. We service all citizens as a council. Understanding what our mission is. Celebrate the wins, even the small wins. Let the people know what's going on in building their community. We're policymakers, not problem solvers. City managers and staff take care of problems. Be open-minded. Let citizens know which direction you want to go. Your plan is a contract with your community. The city of Portland, population is 25,000 people. They have 1,000 motel rooms. They credit their parks for keeping the rooms full with different little league tournaments each weekend. They're saying that they're more of a sports tourism than retail. They said they had $5 million in hot funds the previous year. The city of Portland, their city council and city manager did a class, and it was real powerful the way that they explained what they did.
I, and I liked you brought that up. I mean, one of the things they, and I would love to see it, and I know we're working on that, but they created an unbelievable sports complex that just brings people, just want to come there because of their facilities. And it's unbelievable, and it's brought back memories of them convincing us that we needed a 5,000-foot runway out at the airport. And they said build it, kind of like the movie, build it and they will come. Well, it's clearly, you can go out to the airport, you can clearly see what has happened out there. Same with them with their sport complex. They built it, they came, and just, it's unbelievable what they've done.
Another one of my highlights that it was grow our next leaders through our committees and boards. And finally, trust the process.
Also, the John O'Leary program was excellent. I think it moved us all in some way. Also, some of the sessions that were on leadership, budgeting, and finance were very helpful. Well, and we got, the city of Navasota was presented with an award, and I think that's coming up.
It is.
But it's something that we had applied for in different categories over many, many years, and this was the first time the city of Navasota was recognized, and that was a very proud moment. As far as downtown, there were some classes on working with partners like the Texas Downtown Association, Texas Historical Commission, and more information as far as more background or information to add to the fact that when you're revitalizing something downtown or anywhere in the city, it is directly connected to economic development, and that's just something for all of us to kind of keep in mind. There was a futurist speaker that was real interesting, talking about AI, which is something that's kind of taken hold these days, and learned a lot about that. Some community engagement, some ideas with engaging for small cities. I was, I attended the Small Cities Advisory Council, which I'm a member of, and we put together the different kind of programs and speakers that are gonna be for the next year at Municipal League Conference. So we talked about some of the ideas for that and kind of what cities are looking for as far as continuing ed and ways to professionally develop and things like that. And I got to be a part of a presentation on ethics and code of conduct with Mr. Bobey and Mr. Heminger. We kind of put our heads together there, and we were asked to put on a presentation, and was very proud to be a part of that, and thank y'all for all your efforts on that.
Yeah, and thankfully, we're in the middle of trying to figure that out because there were other cities who seem to have needed the discussion. I think one of the most important pieces of John O'Leary's presentation was just to rise above adversity, and he revealed how daily inflection points shape the future. And it was a great reminder that while we go through things as a city, they're either beneficial or not so beneficial, but we learn from what those are. And I think that we always, just as humans, will experience those things. And so it was a great reminder that even though you have things that come up that are not exactly how you'd like, you learn from those and try to do better in the future. And so that's kind of what I took from that. I attended the emergency management, what should be in your go-bag session. And it was a good reminder for me for the MOUs that you have in place and the constant preparing for emergencies that while we get caught up in kind of day-to-day things, you don't think about things that happen like July 4th and Camp Mystic. And so what do we need to be prepared for? And so that got me ready for a good conversation with Jason. Attended Texas Legislative and Laws Affecting Planning, and the session was done by the American Planning Association. And there's a website that tracks each bill that could affect planning and zoning, and it ranks each bill, kind of how it fits in with what, whether it's gonna be beneficial for cities or going against cities. And Senate Bill 840 was one that they mentioned specifically that was addressing housing supply shortages and mixed-use residential development and commercial properties. So taking commercial buildings and turning them into mixed-use facilities. And so that was pretty interesting. I did not know about the website, but we're going to. Uh, and it ranks each bill, kind of how it fits in with what, whether it's going to be beneficial for cities or going against cities. And Senate Bill 840 was one that they mentioned specifically. Uh, that was addressing housing supply shortages and mixed use with residential development and commercial properties. So taking commercial buildings and turning them into mixed use facilities. And so that was pretty interesting. I did not know about the website, but we're going to, I'm going to pay closer attention. Uh, and then yes, the ethics and code of conduct for small cities. Appreciate y'all putting that on.
Another thing, I was proud of being from Navasota. One of the hardest sessions to do, I mean, for a speaker, and he admitted that, is the last general session. But it was Bert and I were able to attend and it was from a local citizen, Frank Ashley. I don't know if many of y'all know Frank. He retired from Texas A&amp;M Bush School twice. And he told his story and it was based again on, on ethics and the good, the bad and the ugly about all this. He spoke a lot about how his life, it was a very poor black family in Louisiana. His mother was a single parent, worked as a housekeeper, raised great kids, but how the different people through his life that influenced him to make him go. And how a good part of it is ethics, that we need to really be ethical and think about the things that we do and how it affects so many others. And spoke with him right after the session. And he, he said, he didn't, how proud he was to know that we're from Navasota and we were, he said, he saw us sitting there out there in the audience and that gave him the spirit. One thing that I was so proud of, and Frank just recently found out that he is fighting pancreatic cancer. You would have never known it from his speech, his, that he gave. And he never mentioned it. He did tell me afterwards that he was really worn out because he had just take, started his first treatment, so. But it's proud to know, he retired from A&amp;M. He could have gone anywhere he wanted to. He wanted to come and he retired here in Navasota. He lives out at Pecan Lakes. And I think that says a lot about what Navasota is, that somebody of his nature would want to be a part of the community and be involved with the community. But it was great.
He's also, he also learned to be a pilot at our airport.
Yes, he, that is one of the things he, he's doing right now is, is doing that.
And he's also been, tentatively, I'm, I'm not sure if it's totally been secured, but I think he's going to be the keynote speaker at Navasota ISD Education Foundation banquet coming up in March of next year. So we're real excited about that. Robert or Kerry, y'all have anything?
Well, I'll offer.
Y'all were all there.
Yeah, and, and I will offer, you know, we've talked a lot about the, the, the classes and, you know, rather than restate tho- those things. I think there were also some learning opportunities and some opportunities to bring things back to our community, just in the staff and council interaction, you know, sitting over dinner and talking about family and, and human to human conversation rather than workplace conversation really helps our team coalesce and come together as a, as a unit. Uh, and also I've been heartened by the number of conversations I've had with the directors that, that attended, that have been able to come back and have relationships with new vendors that they met in the vendor area. We've even had demonstrations of equipment that we saw there, bringing it here to see how can this serve our community? How can this make us more efficient and better, and provide a better service to our community? And we're looking at some of those things and incorporating some into, maybe there are some things that will happen right now or they will come up as we talk about next year's budget because they might be bigger ticket things that we didn't have knowledge about beforehand. So just knowing that the staff that went there didn't go to just sit in class and, you know, and be away from the job. They've brought things back and they've already really started to hit the ground running with relationships with vendors and looking at ways to actually put this in place to make us more efficient in the way we serve the community. So I think for me, that's the big win.
They have one of the biggest trade shows in the state, from what I understand. And it's an opportunity not only to talk to possible new vendors, but also talk to ones that we actually work with now.
Right.
And just keep that relationship going, so.
Uh, the primary focus of my time there was the ethics presentation. And just to follow up on what Mayor Prokian indicated, there were several in attendance there that shared their experiences and, and there were some, they were quite intense in their experiences and some, some had negative experiences just with each other and how the dynamics worked on their council in terms of how the ethics policy was used as a weapon sometimes. And it really, I think, gave me a better understanding of what they felt like didn't work, that we could learn from and evaluate, consider in, you know, how we prepare the, the ethics ordinance moving forward. And it was helpful to hear from those, the folks that were there. There was, the conversation was really quite engaging. There were a lot of audience members that were engaged and that was helpful to hear from them. So I think that's the, the primary thing that I took away from the conference was, how can that session help us build a better ordinance for consideration by the council?
Thank you.
Gina?
Y'all had, all the staff had, y'all had reports of your own.
It stabbed me to death, sir.
We're just, we're not going to make them get up to the microphone. Any, let's see. Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. And our project superintendent, Matt Julian, will give a CIP update.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Matthew Julian, Project Superintendent. The elevated storage tank number three project, the construction phase is wrapping up. All the paint is done. They're currently working on some electrical stuff, putting lights and running conduits. So they're looking to be done with that middle of this month. There's still a few things we're going to have to wait on, like filling the tank, disinfecting the tank and back to T test in the tank because we don't have the well yet. So we're still waiting on that, but everything else is coming along nicely. The Rosick Street pedestrian project, staff met on Friday and did a punch list walkthrough and gave that list to Tex dot who was reviewing it and looking at closing out that job. The creekside sidewalk will remain closed at this time. We are still working with GLS. They, they're going to go ahead and take care of the guard rail. We don't have that scheduled yet. In regard to the pedestrian bridge, Tex dot did supply us with an approved drawing for the temporary ramp to be able to use that bridge. And city staff met and decided that's a project that we can handle, but we're going to wait until after the Christmas parade to start working on that, just for safety reasons. The Tex dot sidewalk project on West Washington, all of the concrete work on the north side is complete. Thankfully, it was done before the Turner sidewalk tent sale. That was a concern they had and we were able to get that area cleaned up for them. Uh, there's a small section between the Turner's Economy Store and the propane store that they had to do some, some custom drainage work too. So that park's not done, but everything else from Third to Seventh Street is complete. Uh, during that time, we did have to remove one of the wayfinding signs. But now that their project is, is moved to the south side, we are going to look at getting that sign put back, probably in the same place or in the same general location. Uh, at this time, we do not have a date yet for the road road closure. As soon as we do, we will keep you updated with that. Those are my updates, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any report from council on boards or commissions?
Yes. Zoning met on November the 12th and they approved a variance for a property at 2311 White Wing Street for a setback. And they also approved a variance application for a front setback at 418 East, uh, 418 East Eighth Street, uh, East Chase Street, sorry. Um, and then CPAC group met on the 18th and went over the goals and drafts for the comprehensive plan. And then on Thursday, November the 13th, we had a master plan workshop for parks and rec. And we met at the Navasota Center and met in groups and talked about the different ideas for parks and recreation.
Thank you. There's some dates coming up. We've got on the 11th of December, the Timber Commerce, Seven and Mixer and Classic Rock Coffee Company for the Navasota Quanis Club is hosting there. It starts at 4:30. And I'm going to let Taylor tell us about what's coming up this Saturday.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, Taylor Hughes, Marketing and Communications Director. We have Home for the Holidays this Saturday. So starting at the library will be the farmer's market from nine to one. And then coming here to City Hall from one to five, we have a ton of activities for kids and families, but photos with Santa, cookie decorating with the Navasota High School culinary class, hot chocolate, bounce houses, letters to Santa, a petting zoo and pony rides, lots of stuff. So I'm very excited about that. And then at six o'clock, the parade will start on Rosick and travel down to Ninth Street. Um, and then come back here for the tree lighting and then dueling pianos following the tree lighting. So very excited about all the activities coming up. And then the parade, we do have about 60 entries right now, so it's very large and they're still coming. So very excited.
And the weather outlook is very good.
Yes, beautiful weather.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
We've been through, we've been through a rainy parade before.
I do know at the same time, earlier in the morning, there is the Reefs Across America event happening at Oakland Cemetery.
That's at 11.
Yes.
After that, on the 15th of December, I believe there is, it's a wrapping day for Blue Santa. Was I getting the date right, Chief? Starting at eight o'clock at the Navasota Center, you can come, you can, if you've got 30 minutes to come wrap some presents or longer, just come on out, they'll be up, they'll be there all day. On the 17th of December is a blood drive, American Red Cross Blood Drive at the First United Methodist Church. It starts 11:30, goes to 4:30. You can go to redcrossblood.org to make an appointment or just show up. Don't have to make the appointment if you're not able to. Uh, but do support the, the blood drive if you can. Uh, the 17th of December, Mobile Park Play Day at the library, 5:30. They'll have cocoa, snowballs, games and story time. The 18th of December, Pokemon Club again at 4:30 at the library. And then on the 22nd is the Christmas pajama party at the library, 5:30, have cocoa and movies. Library's busy.
You did?
Anything else?
Navasota Theater has, continuing to have to open this weekend, a tuna Christmas. If you have any interest in going, I encourage you to get your tickets. They already have two, have had two sold out performances, which is awesome. Uh, it continues this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, two o'clock matinee. And then the following 18th, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
And you can go to navasotatheater.org, T R E dot org, and you can get your ticket, pick out your seat and.
Sit, everything.
Real easy. Item five, recognition of the award winners from the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, Texas Downtown Conference and Brazos Valley Council of Governments.
Mayor, I think Charlie and Taylor Ashton, or I think we got a tag team on this one since we've got several different awards that are, everyone's excited to talk about.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Charlie Studs, Economic Development. On October 29th, at the annual Texas TML League Conference in downtown Fort Worth, right after John O'Leary made us all cry, we, the city of Navasota was honored to receive the City Spirit Award for its efforts and involvement in the adaptive reuse of a city-owned warehouse into a vibrant local business. Uh, Wildflyer Mead and Beer Company worked diligently with the city staff, city staff to turn a city storage building into Wildflyer Meadery and Beer Company. They're an awesome, super unique local business and they make Navasota branded beverages and they're just, they have great food and it's such a cool project. And the city was really, really honored to be able to receive that recognition in front of city professionals statewide. And so it was a really cool thing. And then there's two more awards that we won too.
And I'm happy to announce that at this year's Texas Downtown Conference in Waco, the city of Navasota was recognized for three different categories. Um, the first one being that Crystal Garza won Best Commercial Downtown Interior for Blackberry and Honeysuckle, which I know you've all been inside and it's absolutely beautiful. Um, so she was recognized for her hard work on her building and her business. Um, so we're very proud of her on that accomplishment. And then Wildflyer Mead was also recognized as a finalist for, I believe, Best Public Improvement for their building. And then we were recognized as a finalist for Best Event Promotion for Sounds of Navasota and that rebrand this year. So very excited about.
And then last but not least, on October 24th, 2025, our code enforcement officer, Mr. Eric, received an award on behalf of the Keep Navasota Beautiful Commission. The award was received at the Brazos Valley Council of Governments Environmental Management and Planning Awards luncheon for KMB and staff's effort on the annual trash off event in April. Kudos to Eric, KMB and all supporting staff that make the event a success every year.
Thank you.
We're going to get a quick picture, I think. Oh, wait, one more.
Now, item number six, consideration, possible action on the city of Navasota's 2025 Strategic Plan.
Mayor and Council, happy to answer any other questions that you might have on it, but we had a presentation late, but we had it during the workshop this evening. And staff looks forward to, to getting to work on, on these important initiatives and objectives and will be providing updates as discussed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the 2025 City of Navasota Strategic Plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Gessner to approve the City of Navasota 2025 Strategic Plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, item carries. Item seven, consideration, possible action, Resolution 811-25, casting votes for the Grimes Central Appraisal District Board of Directors election.
Mayor and City Council, uh, earlier in this year, I think it was in November, y'all nominated Jenny Fultz Jarvis and then Charles Frady. So now it's time to allocate those votes. So we just need to decide who gets the votes and then I can fix the resolution up and have that sent over to the appraisal district. We have a total of, I think it was 274 votes. Yes, 274 votes is all that Navasota has allocated. Yes, two hundred and seventy-four votes is all that Navasota has allocated to cast. And it's for a two-year term. It'll start January twenty-sixth and go through December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-seven. And then the top five receiving the most votes will be elected to the Grams County Board of Directors.
And I'd like to remind the, the council that, this position is, is the Board of Directors for the,
Operations.
For the operations type thing. So, these are, these are not the people that you would appear before to.
Yeah.
Uh.
Has nothing to do with, nothing to do with evaluation. Yeah. That's correct.
I did reach out to Ms. Fullts, she, uh, Jarvis, she is willing to serve again if appointed. I didn't contact, um, Mr. Freedy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, we cast all our votes for, uh, Ms. Jarvis.
I would have a motion also, so how could we handle that?
First, we have to see if we have a second. Correct?
Correct. See if there's a second to this motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries.
James, do Jesus vote aye?
I didn't vote it out.
Okay.
Item eight, consideration possible action, Resolution eight twelve dash twenty-five, establishing a designated mailing address, email address and website for the receipt of requests for public information.
Mayor and City Council, um, we do have open, a lot of open records requests and hopefully with this resolution, it'll streamline the process and make it easier for staff because right now emails are going to individual employees, they're going to all parts of the website. And if we have one email address that they go to, we can have other subcategories for other employees to receive it. But it will streamline our process that we can, uh, keep record of them. And in the process, we're gonna be looking at maybe a company or a firm or program that can actually help us to monitor those. And, um, I'll be looking at that hopefully this week. Those companies that, uh, Robert had suggested, some that we look at. But this is just a way to streamline everything and they just have one place to go on the website. We're gonna create a page. And if this is approved, we're asking that it'll be registered January of first twenty twenty-six. This will allow us to work with Taylor to get the website up and running, get all the links posted in the correct forms that we want to use for that particular reason. And Carrie has reviewed this and prepared this resolution for us.
Mayor and Council, I was gonna add that, um, this resolution really is specifically authorized by state law. When you look at the, uh, the Public Information Act, Public Information Act says that a governing body of an entity can designate, you know, these single points of contact with respect to Public Information Act requests. So this is, um, this is an action that is in accordance with state law.
I failed to mention, we have been in contact with Carrie for several months about this and the process and what we can do to streamline, to make it easier for all staff.
So, all of the, um, all of the, uh, public requests will be still going to the city secretary.
Right, but we could have, like, say, we could post a police department application and then the general application and then the P D. I will still get a copy of it so that I can track those, but then it can go to like the chief, his assistant secretary and his two rubber clerks. And then the other one could perhaps go to Loopy, Jennifer, Taylor, anybody for their departments. But we'll have multiple people that can see them, but they're all gonna come to me and I will track each and every one and make sure when we receive them, when they're completed, if they go to legal counsel. So I'll keep track of that until we can get some kind of software that can help us with that. And I'm doing it right now, just in Excel and it's working out really good right now, so.
So, when this happens, uh, the, uh, the city secretary is the one that's responsible, will make sure that ten days that they've notified that.
Correct. And we're not gonna accept faxes anymore. They'll have to either email it or they can come in person, so.
Uh, Councilmember, I think this will help the ten-day compliance because then you have a specific point of contact and it won't be, uh, there won't be any problem with it getting uh, sent to maybe an inactive email address for some of the location that, that Suzie's not aware of. So, I do think it would help with compliance as well. Just to make sure we're aware of the request and respond timer.
And we'll clean up the website because there may be multiple notations of, uh, public rest, public record requests on different department pages. We're gonna take all that off and have one page under the city secretary for open records. So it'll clean the website up as well.
We'll put out an official announcement once.
Yes, that's all part of it with the rules and regulations and that'll give us time, um, the next couple of weeks to work on all of that.
Is there, so I, you just were talking about if you bring it to, to you, that they can also make the request that way. But is there a form, an actual form that someone has that can give it to somebody that walks in or how does that?
They can, yeah, we have them that we print off. It's also, it's online right now, the form that we use, it is online. They can download.
Just thinking about folks that don't have computers or.
Right, no, they can come in and ask for one and I can, they can sit down and fill it out. We still have ten days to work. We don't have to respond right then and there with the documentation. We still have ten days.
Not doing away with that option.
No, 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 no. They can come in person or they can do it on the website either.
We're currently getting a lot of requests to that media@navasotatx.gov email address. And so I'll just have an automated response that has this form that goes directly to Suzie.
Well, you can actually turn that off. I mean, that way prevent it from going to the media site.
People are gonna email it, that address, just so we have an automated response. This is how you submit a formal request.
I move to approve Resolution eight twelve dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries.
Thank you.
Item nine, consideration possible action, Resolution eight thirteen dash twenty-five for the submission of a twenty twenty-six grant application for the Office of Governor Body worn Camera Grant Program.
Mayor and City Council, Martin Myers, Chief of Police, in front of you is the resolution replied for through the, uh, Texas Governor's Office for Body worn Cameras. Uh, we did have the old Panasonic cameras and they are fading away. Um, they're server type systems, so we're transitioning everything over to Motorola. So, it's a good option for this grant to come out. This grant is a seventy-five twenty-five. We, uh, spend twenty-five percent, which we budgeted to replace two body worn cameras. And then actually with this grant, it's gonna allow us to purchase eight total, um, cam, body worn cameras.
Good. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution eight thirteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Full, second by Mr. Gessner to approve Resolution eight thirteen dash twenty-five, submission of a twenty twenty-six grant application for the Office of Governor Body worn Camera Grant Program. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries. James. Item ten, consideration possible action to enter to an agreement with Blile Engineering to provide design services, bidding and construction management for the wastewater man, wastewater treatment plant, creek bank rehab project for the city of Navasota in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Matthew Julian, Project Superintendent. Uh, the Public Works Department is requesting to enter into this service agreement with our engineer, Blile Engineering, to assist us with this project. It is a budgeted funded project. Uh, they've been with us for about a year on an on-call basis, kind of looking at options. Uh, just a quick recap. There's some areas in the creek behind the, the property where there's a significant erosion that is taking place. In the northwest corner, the erosion is about five feet from the fence. And then closer to the middle of the property in the back, there's a section that is washed out and it's actually collapsed our effluent pipe. The water's flowing fine, but it's no longer where it's supposed to be airing in the creek. So, they've been with us, kinda overseeing this. Now we wanna go ahead and get them on and assist us with this project.
Uh, I did, um, drive over this morning and, and visit this, this location and, uh, because when I studied this, this past weekend and everything, uh, I wanted to see what it looked like back there and, uh, you know, grass, green, them growed up and everything. It's not like it's a mercy deal and everything, but the sixty thousand dollars that you all have proposed for us to approve here, did we go out for bid for that?
Not yet. I think this is like, uh, like the ten percent of the, you know, what we think it might cost. Uh, Blile has given us some options, excuse me, of what we can do. Uh, Tim Wolf of Blile is here tonight, uh, to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Well, this is just for the design and the.
Yeah.
And the, the management.
Right, but, but it's still sixty thousand dollars though, but we're just, I mean, I know Blile Engineering has been working with us in the past and everything, but sixty thousand dollars is sixty thousand dollars. We went out for bid for this.
So, Mayor and Council, uh, just, just to kind of touch on that, with, with engineering, it's, it's slightly different. So, when we, when we talk about going out for bids, that, that's kind of the equivalent of an RFP or Request for Proposals, where we are getting a low cost or, or price estimate and we're comparing price to price. The, the, the Texas, I, I'm gonna butcher the, the law name. It has a, a formal name, but the procurement law says for professional services, you cannot bid them based solely on price. You have to evaluate them based on the qualifications. And I did have a very in-depth conversation with our staff uh, from Public Works and they felt like because of their intimate knowledge of our wastewater treatment plant and this project, there was not another engineering firm that would have the qualifications to, to compare to Blile because they already have been working with it. So, any other engineering firm would have to get up to that level of knowledge by investing more time, which would cost us more. And so the staff felt like the, the assessment of qualifications, while we did not do a formal R F Q process, we don't have to unless it's over a hundred thousand dollars by law. But we didn't do that because we felt like Blile's professional knowledge gave them the inherent qualifications to do the job. Did I, did I make sense at all? Like, Carrie was looking at me like he might wanna add something to it. Did I butcher it or?
No, no, it's Professional Services and Procurement Act, but.
Yes.
You, you are exactly right. It's a two-step process. Uh, first you, uh, evaluate the engineer. Uh, the city's not required to go out for RFQs if you feel like you have the engineer that best meets the, the needs. Um, through experience and competency qualifications, uh, past relationship with the city. Um, there is no requirement that you go out for RFQs, but the city is prohibited from uh, bidding those services. So the, it's a two-step process. You select the engineer and then with that specific engineer, you, um, negotiate price, talk about price. And so you can't really get to talking about money until you make a determination that the engineering firm that you want to select is the, is the right one for the job. And so that's, um, you know, that's, the, the valuation that staff has done, um, has led to this point where staff is recommending this firm, um, for this price based on a two-step process that's required by law.
Okay, Carrie, I, I do understand what you're saying. Yes, sir. But at the same time, us five are purely is to make a decision on this company. And it's just only one company that has been brought to us. So, if there's someone else is out there that want to do this, wanna know why they didn't have a chance to bid on this. Now, what if the sixty thousand dollars pop up that? I mean, who came up with that number?
That was the quote that, that Blile, that, that through, through conversation with staff. So, so as, as Carrie mentioned, the, the way an RFQ works or when we are procuring professional services, we, we can't talk price until we, and what the law says is your highest qualified vendor you negotiate price with. If you cannot come to an agreeable price, then you go to your second highest qualified vendor. So, if the council isn't happy with sixty thousand dollars and doesn't feel like the qualifications that Blile brings to the table is worth sixty thousand dollars, they can instruct us by not awarding this contract tonight. We will go find a secondary qualified engineering firm, negotiate with them and come back to you with a separate negotiated price. My fear is that because they will automatically have less knowledge about the project, the price is probably gonna go up instead of down.
Well, as I read what Blile have sent us right here, um, we're gonna pay them thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars just to, uh, visit the site three times to, to evaluate the creek, which we already know that the creek need to be some kind of way cured. Uh, price is kind of steep. I mean, uh, I drive out in, uh, one forty-nine going out in the, uh, in the Corthone area, the Brazos River is just about to take in, uh, that one forty-nine loop right there. Because every time it rains, dirt washes off into the river. And the state right now is trying to find some kind of way to fix that, but, uh, I've talked to the guy that owns property, that's a former out there that, you know, he's in negotiation with the state right now to see how can they manage that because sooner or later, you're not gonna even be able to, to go down that road because it's gonna wash out.
Right.
And, and, and I know it's the same thing over, uh, at our treatment plant, but how many, uh, years old is this treatment plant?
The original section of it was built in nineteen seventy-seven and the upgrade was done in ninety-five.
Been at, at any time, did the creek come in, up in the issue there?
No, uh, fifteen years ago, when I started as operator out there, I was behind that fence with a tractor. I could get about two passes off the fence before it went into the creek. And today, you can't get a push mower back there. So, and, you know, we have seen significant erosion in those fifteen years. And then the effluent pipe was something we discovered about a year ago that it wasn't flowing where it was supposed to be. And we backtracked it and found a big hole.
Yeah, I noticed going around a kind of a moon type deal is that, that, you know, I'm not an architect or anything, but, uh, uh, I maybe even come up and kind of explain it to us. Seemed like to me, we may be wasting good money trying to go out to something that's not gonna be a long-term fix. Cause I've seen it with my own eyes.
Joe, would y'all like to hear from?
Yes.
From Blile?
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Wolf with Blile Engineering. Um, part of the scope of this is it's, uh, like Matt said, the, the existing outfall has been totally washed out and there's pipe just sticking out of the ground, which you probably saw. Uh, a lot of this is, there're gonna have to be a lot of clearing, regrading of that entire bank back there. It, it was initially one long, just standard slope back there all the way down to the creek bank or down to the, to the flow line. Um, all of that will have to be rebuilt and stabilized in addition to redoing the entire outfall. We may, we may adjust it a little bit and, and help, uh, stabilize. There's another, it's a slight drainage swell, but it collects a lot of drainage from the east side of the plant that runs through there too. And so there will be fixing all of that and stabilizing all of that and protecting that from further erosion too.
So, so what you're saying, you believe it could be repaired?
Yes, sir. Yes, I believe it can be repaired.
I just had a question.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Good.
And, and, and I will say this in front of council and everybody here, and I've already spoken with Mr. Himinger about it. If we come in well on a budget, we'll give it back to you. If it comes in a whole lot cheaper than we expect, we'll give it back to you. I'll tell you that right now. Which we've done on other projects too.
One other question here, um, can you tell us how many feet that you think that creek cap washed towards the, uh, plant?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Sorry. Are you talking about stream length or how far up from the bank?
Stream length.
No, but it is. It's, it's a few hundred feet.
Because it's not straight, you know, it's.
Right, right. But even, even just a straight line is pretty much, because it's, there's really three spots, but I think we're gonna focus on two. there's really three spots, but I think we're gonna focus on two spots that come up that have washed out towards the, the treatment plant. And that section is at least two-thirds of the whole width of the treatment plant, which I'm, I'm guessing is three hundred feet or so. I'm, I'm kind of spitballing there, I really don't know.
Wouldn't be, uh.
I know I've looked at it.
Matt, you may want to help me out on this, but on the big square box deal that's floating around out there and everything, is that gonna be stable once all of this started? You guys put the ears underneath that or something?
That's kind of the, the plan. Uh, currently the section where the effluent water is leaving the plant is just like a big hole, and so when the stormwater comes in, it circles and it comes back out. So every time it does that, it's just gonna keep washing that out. On top of that, we're dumping five hundred thousand gallons of treated water a day in that same spot. So the idea of doing something to stabilize that, that creek should stop that.
I'm doing a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement with Blal Engineering to provide design services, building, bidding and construction management for the wastewater treatment plant, creek bank.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Holt to enter an agreement with Blal Engineering to provide design services, bidding and construction management for wastewater treatment plant, creek bank rehab project, city of Navasota, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries. Item eleven, consideration possible action to enter into an agreement with Blal Engineering to provide design services, bidding and construction management for the Pecan Lakes Phase Four Utility Looping Project from City of Navasota in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
So this is another, um, budget-funded project that we've been looking at. What this is probably is gonna be is basically a water and gas main extension on the backside of Pecan Lake subdivision. When, uh, Pecan Grove started building their Phase One, they ran a water line and tied in on counter of four twenty-four and the gas line. So what we're wanting to do is extend the water and gas all the way down and tie into Spyglass Drive and Champions Drive. What this project will do is increase the volume of water and gas available to the residents in the Phase Three and Phase Four sections of that subdivision.
Matt, I've got another question here. Uh, did the, uh, the, um, I think, did the builder supposed to provide this?
So this was not in the plans. Uh, this subdivision was a little different like than the other ones with Altamira and Hidden Hills and Pecan Grove, we got to see the entire, the entire subdivision in one plot. With Pecan Lakes, that wasn't the case. We saw Phase One and Phase Two, and then Phase Three came along. Phase Three was split into three separate phases. And then when Phase Four came along, we were looking at the plans, we saw two water and gas connections from Phase Three into Phase Four. What we failed to see was Phase three point two, and Phase three point three is being fed by one eight-inch water line. So that means that all of Phase Four is sharing that one eight-inch water line with Phase three point two and three point three. So we did not see the need based on what we just had in the Phase Four plans. So this is something that we feel will help the volume for the customers out there. And also, once Pecan Grove gets further on in their development, we are asking them to run another water line down West one oh five, down Pecan Lakes Drive to tie in also to give it even more volume for the backside of that subdivision.
Um, just on last year, uh, I think it was in December, not last year, but December twenty twenty-three, I just come on the court, we approved seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for a gas loop out at Pecan Lakes. That, I, I was thinking then that it should have been the developers' cost. And now we're asking for another forty thousand on a electric loop. So what's gonna be next? What's, what's next out there that didn't get done by the developer?
There's not much else we can do for that subdivision. Uh, this should be all that, you know, we can attach with what we have. With, with extending this, and then what's also could happen is if someone hits the water main in, in Phase three point two and you shut the water off, every single customer past that does not have any water. This loop will allow us to feed water in the backside and isolate just the section that needs to be fixed, providing service for the customers while we make that repair.
I guess my question is that, that we dropped the ball somewhere? When I say we, the city and the development out there? Because it's costing the city thousands of dollars each year or two, and that's just about the nearest subdivision that we have here in the city. And spent almost a million there last year.
I can't really answer that question because I wasn't involved in the design phase of that specific subdivision. So I'm sure it probably is, the ball got dropped somewhere. It was just something we probably just overlooked.
I mean, do any of the council, you know, you've been on the council longer than I have, I mean, did, did we drop the ball?
Well, I don't, I'm not here to, to review kind of what their gas plans are, and I didn't see it. I mean, we take our, we take the word of the people that are coming to us. So if they're saying that we have to fix this, or this is for the betterment of the community, uh, to get it done, seems like we need to get it done. Uh, if we can, I mean, we can, we can say, oh my gosh, we didn't do this, uh, whoever that may be, but that doesn't fix the, fix the problem that's out there that needs to be done.
Yeah, but, uh, the reason I'm questioning this is that we've got quite a bit of subdivision that want to come to our city, and if we're not watching it close, I mean, uh, you know, a million dollars will go a lot for on repairing streets.
So Mayor and Council, I will offer that, uh, you know, you, the, the one thing that was a little unique about this particular development is the phases weren't all known upfront. Generally speaking, when a developer comes to a city and has a master plan community, uh, or a large parcel of land, they, they lay out, at least in a bubble plan, kind of what, what the master plan looks like. And the, and the city inspectors and, and reviewers know to make sure that these systems are looped. One of the exercises that we are doing right now as a part of our comprehensive plan update is developing a Unified Development Code, or UDC, that will also very, make very clear these requirements to loop in the utility systems for redundancy, for the betterment of the communities that get left behind by the developers. Um, it does appear to me, as the new guy here, that the developer, I, I won't say that he tried to conceal anything because I wasn't here and don't know if he knew there were gonna be five or six or eight phases of that development from day one, or if it truly was just he woke up each day and there was a new phase growing. I, I, I don't know, but it clearly wasn't thought out with these looped systems and the, and the staff is now keenly aware of making sure that we do not miss these kind of things and that we do overlook because it is costly. And we, and we do recognize that, and, and you do have our commitment that that is something that is very high on our radar to be making sure that utilities that are being provided by developers are fully up to best practices and fully looped in and, and providing all of the services that's gonna be needed for the community that they build and leave behind.
Yeah, you also had multiple developers, different developers, multiple landowners, and then over time too. So, yeah, there, there were just a lot of things playing into it.
Uh, another question I've got is that when a subdivision is finished here in the city, do city staff say it's done, or do we have an outside person come in and check everything and make sure it's done, or, or just how is that determined?
Well, so, it, when you say when a subdivision is done, generally the utilities go in first, the, the flat work, the ground, the street goes in, and we do have inspections that take place. Um, and, and we, you know, accept those streets into a one-year warranty period and, and you all accept those and close them out, uh, in that manner. Um, we don't really have anyone that closes out a, a, a set of homes per se, other than as an individual home gets an inspection for a certificate of occupancy, it does get inspected, whether that's by, most of the time, internal city staff, but it, we do also have contract inspectors when the work volume gets, gets to, to such, so high that we can't keep up. Uh, but to my understanding, it's, it predominantly in-house, uh, inspectors, our building official and our inspectors in, in his department, uh, do go out and they do the inspections and they issue the certificates of occupancy for the homes. Uh, but, but by the time you're doing home inspections, the, the streets and the infrastructure have been done usually by months.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm, may indeed, uh, rephrase my question. When the utility is laid, do we inspect?
Is that in-house or is that contract? In-house.
For, for the mains, that is in-house. We do have one project inspector that can kind of oversee every project. We do have a special project crew now that if we need to be on site for the entire day while they're laying a gas main, we can allocate one person to oversee to make sure it's being done right.
And, and this specific agenda item is just for Pecan Lakes? This does not affect any other property that's in the area or could potentially be in the area?
Sure. It's looping in the systems that are already serving Pecan Lakes, that is.
So it, it could possibly provide water and gas for the, uh, the properties that are facing one oh five, so they can get fed from, from the backside if they wanted to connect into the city infrastructure, they could, if it was available.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the agreement with Blal Engineering to provide, provide design services, bidding and construction management for Pecan Lakes Phase Four Utility Looping for the City of Navasota in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessner to approve or enter into an agreement with Blal Engineering to provide design services, bidding and construction management for Pecan Lakes Phase Four Utility Looping Project, City of Navasota, in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item twelve, consideration possible action, resolution eight fourteen dash twenty-five, adopting an updated employee handbook for the City of Navasota to be effective January one, twenty twenty-six.
Mayor and Council, happy to answer any other questions that you have after the workshop presentation.
Move to approve resolution eight fourteen dash twenty-five, adopting an updated employee handbook for the City of Navasota, effective January one, twenty twenty-six.
Section.
Motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, item carries. Item thirteen, consideration possible action, resolution eight fifteen dash twenty-five, adopting City of Navasota travel policy.
Same song, second verse.
Move to approve resolution eight fifteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gessner to approve resolution eight fifteen dash twenty-five, adopting City of Navasota travel policy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item fourteen, consideration possible action, resolution eight sixteen dash twenty-five, approving the Texas term sheet, including the interstate allocation schedule and subdivision settlement participation forms concerning the global opioid litigation settlement.
So Mayor and Council, not knowing how aware you are of this situation, been going on for several years, but I don't know, uh, it doesn't sound like this community has had a lot of discussion on it. So a, as a, a very brief background, um, obviously the country has had a, an opioid epidemic going on, um, and there have been numerous lawsuits where, um, state governments and other, um, governmental entities have sued the pharmaceutical industries and those, uh, engaged in the distribution, um, and sale of the various opioids and derivatives thereof that have led to, uh, these medicines and, and, and drugs being abused and causing this, this epidemic. So there are a number of cases that have come to settlement terms whereby communities can participate, uh, through the, the state. Our state has, uh, prescribed a term sheet, and I'll let Carrie talk to the legalities of it, but through the Attorney General's Office, I believe, they have prescribed this term sheet that says we can participate in these settlements going forward, backdating and going forward. The funds that we get, um, and, and I have a little bit of experience, we had several settlement agreements that came across, uh, my desk in the previous city that I served, uh, they're usually a few thousand dollars at a time, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it allows our police department to use that funds instead of our budget dollars to buy things like Narcan, um, and, and devices that can be used for, as a part of the response. Uh, and so it, it just allows us to, to have that equipment rather than use our budget money. We, we have this, the money is, is separately, uh, uh, it's set aside for these purposes. And, and if you get this as a part of a, a settlement, the term sheet lays out kind of what the appropriate uses are. It's generally, uh, goes to the police department and they kind of put together a plan for, you know, providing the patrol officers with Narcan and different types of, uh, uh, equipment and, uh, devices like that. It can also go to, uh, firefighting first responders or EMS if you have EMS in the community. So anything that's going towards and being used towards response to someone that is in the middle of a, an opioid crisis, uh, or overdose situation. And, and so this would allow us to, uh, to just let the state know that yes, our community is willing to abide by that policy, that we will use the money appropriately if there are funds. There aren't any funds immediately today that we're saying yes, we're just saying yes, we will participate in these, in these settlements. And I believe there have been already some that got deposited, am I right, Carrie? I, I'm, I'm trying to remember, it sounds like there might have, they might have already sent some to us thinking we had participated, and then when Carrie and I got to looking at it, we had not officially said yes, we will participate. And so rather than us saying no and sending money back potentially, we felt like bringing it to you all tonight, asking for your permission to say yes, we will participate, um, and we will abide by this a, and then go forward. And, and we'll certainly keep you updated on anything that comes in or anything else that comes across. Um, Carrie, you want to add anything else to the way you wrote tonight's agenda item?
Sir, uh, you've got a really good summary. I think, uh, the decision part for the council is if you don't approve this, um, you won't, you won't participate in the, the settlement funds. Uh, Robert did explain, um, accurately that there, there's multi-state litigation throughout the country that, uh, the Texas Attorney General has been very ambitious, um, in participating in against manufacturers, retailers, and distributors. And so, um, this is an opportunity for the council to say yes, we do want to participate, um, in the various settlements. The, uh, Texas Opioid, um, Fund Council, Texas Opioid Abatement Fund Council, which is the state entity to which the settlement funds get sent and then it gets allocated from there. Uh, the city has been provided at this point approximately twenty-five thousand dollars spread over three payments. Um, the AG's office, uh, was surprised that, that we had not submitted the paperwork to them. And so when I spoke with the AG's office, they said yes, if, if you do want to participate, please have your council approve this as soon as possible. If not, then we will. If not, then we will have to send the money back. But the decision point is, do you want to participate in, uh, these settlements? Or you can reserve the right to sue the companies on behalf of the city individually, which really would not make a whole lot of...
No.
Economic sense.
No.
So, um, the use of money funds is, is pretty broad, as Robert explained. And so, um, it, it's, it's money that is, that is there, that you'll continue to receive funds every year as settlements occur, and as the, uh, the calculations get done by the, uh, opioid, uh, council, then they'll get sent out to the, the various counties, uh, COGS and, uh, cities throughout the state. So, um, this is the opportunity for the city to say, yes, we do want to participate. And, um, you know, you are settling with those companies by participating. So if you're saying, yes, we're going to waive our rights to sue them in the future, but, uh, we're gonna go ahead and participate in the, uh, litigation settlements that have occurred again, um, brought against those companies by the AG's office.
And these funds can only be used for the, uh, uh, police department, fire department, EMS?
It, uh, it has to be related to opioid abuse. It could be training, it could be Narcan, as Robert said, it could be, um, a whole host of different purposes. It's pretty broad, uh, but it's very common for police departments to use it for the Narcan that they can carry with them for those types of situations that require it. But there can be education in the schools, all sorts of, uh, things. And when I spoke to the AG's office, they said, you know, if you come up with some other use and you want to run it by us, they're glad to talk about that. If you have some creative way that's not listed in their little, um, helpful fact sheet, you know, they're glad to, they're glad to talk about it. It's, it's more, more broadly, uh, allowed than just the police department.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution number eight one six dash two five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Harris, to approve Resolution eight sixteen dash twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, item carries. Item fifteen is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes for November twenty twenty-five and municipal court report for October twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes for the month of November twenty-five and municipal court report for the October twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Full, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, item carries. Item sixteen, executive session. City council shall meet in the executive session, as permitted by Section five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, Discussion Regarding the Purchase, Exchange, Lease and/or Acquisition of Real Property for City Purposes, time seven forty-six.
Luca, you ready?
Item seventeen, we'll reconvene at nine o'clock PM. Consideration of possible action regarding the purchase, exchange, lease and/or acquisition of real property for city purposes, including but not limited to authorizing the city manager to negotiate, approve and execute any necessary documentation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city manager be authorized to purchase and acquire one or more parcels of real property for city purposes, including but not limited to authorizing the city manager to negotiate, approve and execute any necessary documents within the perimeters discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.